Good morning. At this time, we will call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for the purpose of agenda review for next week's business session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klucka is in the building. Commissioner Hanslick.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Ilert.
Here. We do have a quorum present. Would the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda item?
Item number one, consider approving the March 28, 2019 business session minutes. And item number two, consider approving an agreement with the City of Mission, Kansas, to continue to lease approximately .66 acres on Johnson County wastewater property at Lamar and Foxridge to be used as a community garden.
Does there anyone who wants to speak to that issue? Susan? I think this is a cooperative effort that's been ongoing, probably should continue. Not sure how much longer it can go, but can you enlighten us?
Yes, sir. Chairman and Commissioner Susan Pecaric with wastewater. It is, it's been a great partnership with the city. They've had the community garden there for 10 years. You see on the map, we've got highlighted in green that area where the garden is. The city recognizes that we will probably need to be doing some improvements in this area, pardon me, in the next five years or so. So therefore, the agreement reflects that, and so it will be an annual renewal of that agreement until we need to start doing those improvements.
Okay, all right. Questions?
I just wanted to thank Susan. When I brought this to her attention, some residents had contacted me, were very worried about losing their garden, and Susan got right on it and got with the City of Mission. So, thank you.
All right. This will remain on consent. Next item.
Item number three, consider adopting the Board of County Commissioner priorities for 2019 through 2020.
Ms. Boz, Ferguson.
Chairman and Commissioners, you've seen this a few times, and so now we have a version that we are requesting for you to take action on next week. I will highlight a few things as reminders and point out a few of the tweaks that we've made since we last had a discussion. So, you may recall, well, you will recall that we had the board retreat in January with the directors, and that's where you gave us the overall direction on the board priorities. And it was more conceptual, so then staff went to work on the language and brought that back for your review. First, March 7 manager's memo, which gave you a little bit of time to review, and then discussion in March 21 at the board study session. And from that, we have made the tweaks that we heard, and I will highlight that as we go. And as I said, we're looking for adoption next week if you are in agreement, and see what questions you may have. So, this you have seen already, but the top priorities are large existing capital projects, and Tomahawk wastewater treatment plant, the courthouse, library, and parks master plans, medical examiner, et cetera. And so, with this one, you've probably had the most interaction with us because we have brought you several work sessions, grand openings, and ribbon cuttings. And so, we do have a bi-monthly report, and report those through the CIP and the budget process as well. So, I feel like that we have a lot of communication on these, and as well as the Parks and Library Board and their outreach that they do. With all of these, we do meet with those stakeholders that are directly involved, whether it's cities, neighborhoods, et cetera. And the next one that's exciting and around the corner is June 2, and the Lenexa City Center Library grand opening. The number two priority is one that we have talked about for several years as well, related to vulnerable populations. And you can see this language is what we have talked about before. On the next slide is really, and it's part of this overall vulnerable populations, the one thing that we did tweak a little bit, that we've talked about, is looking at the appropriate level of service to meet the needs for the vulnerable populations, and looking at innovative strategies. And so, you can see in the impact statement that part of the process is really to identify and remind ourselves what the challenges are, and update those challenges with you in the coming months through some study sessions and other formats. And then also, looking at strategies to enhance the coordination of those various services and working with our community partners. At the study session, we had a lot of discussion on these two areas, and so, a few things that I would like to say that we're going to follow up as a result of those discussions. Mental health, you see the list of vulnerable populations that we listed here as topic areas that we plan to bring back in the coming months to have further discussion, as well as through the budget process. But, mental health, we do plan to have a work session on that on April 25 in two weeks. And then, we will have most of May earmarked for budget through early June. So, we look to come back with the other vulnerable population categories, including IDD population and aging, starting in mid-June and starting to discuss that. I do want to highlight, oh, I need to go to the next one, too, then the housing and homeless discussion that we had at the study session. So, I will say what's in the packet verbally to confirm what staff heard as the direction is that they, that you all want us to be, it's a community problem, a community need that will take a lot of stakeholders in the community to have a discussion about. That you want us, you want the county to be at the table, not necessarily leading the efforts, but at the table with our other partners discussing this. And one opportunity is coming up in June with the Human Services Summit. You all have, I think, received an invitation in your email about this, but I do want to highlight that because it crosses over into these categories. So, mark your dates if you haven't already. I think staff has put the invitation on your calendar for June 11. And the speaker will be Dr. Tiffany Manuel, PhD, President and CEO of The Case Made. And she's written a book, as well as, you know, worked in focus areas of community data, homelessness, and other areas. One book that she, or an article that she has written is "You Don't Have to Live Here: Why Housing Messages Are Backfiring and 10 Things We Can Do About It." So, that is a summit that may be helpful for us all to, as we do information gathering, to keep in mind. The next priority of the top three priorities is transit and continuing our work there. We do have a study session scheduled for May 2 for transit, so that's in three weeks, to give you an update on a number of these issues that you see here, and how our initiatives are performing for job access and mobility across the county. And then, the list of other topics identified, I list them here in your packet in the actual redlined version, and we also have a clean copy in your packet of the details of this that we've gone over. I do note that the top three priorities are the ones that staff are focusing on the most, and are, have been, and will continue. The others, the other topics identified here are within existing resources, meaning that we will be working on them, but not as much of a focus as the top three priorities. And so, I'm happy to go into these if you'd like me to, but I wanted to list them here as a reminder. And I do want to back up to tell you where two changes were made in priority number two, since we last talked, and then, again, it's in your redlined version so that you can see that. In 2A, which is the first bullet, we actually took out the housing insecure in that category and put it in B, which on the slide is the second bullet, and made that focus on housing choices. And so, it's listed there, and we added the word homeless per your direction last time we met. So, with that, I will stand for questions.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Comments on two items. The first item, number two, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown and I had an opportunity to visit with some leaders in the City of Alatha. As we know, there've been some recent discussions about some homelessness efforts there. And I think, and Mr. Brown, I don't want to speak for you, so please feel free to cut me off, but the interest here, I think, is for us to help facilitate these conversations and make them a community-based solution. My personal fear is, if it is not community-based, it becomes something that falls solely, soundly, and financially on the county, which makes it potentially difficult to really address the fundamental underlying issue. So, Mr. Brown, if that's not something you agree with, please elaborate. So, I encourage that facilitation effort, and us as co-conveners, but not owners, of the solution, because it's a community issue. It's not just a county government issue. So, I offer that perspective. Mr. Brown, I'm sorry.
I agree with everything you said, Commissioner Ashcraft. I would also comment that it's not just, just a Johnson County community. I'm not talking about the government, the community of Johnson County. This is not just a Johnson County concern or issue. This is a metro-wide concern and issue, and I don't know how you get the entire metropolitan area on the same page. I'm not sure anybody's ever done it, but it is bigger than the community of Johnson County to address. So, this is a challenge. This is a big one.
Well, I would simply add this. You know, this is going to take some time, and I think there's quite a bit of information that needs to be collected. For instance, there are opportunities currently that exist in Johnson County over a wide range of different activities, whether it's Salvation Army, whether it's the Interfaith Hospitality Network program, and I know there are other programs. So, I think as a starting point, we need to be able to identify what currently is available. But no, the conversations with the cities are important, because obviously, we do know to have specific jurisdiction in their corporate boundaries. Ms. Fast.
Yeah, I was just wondering during the budget discussions, like the IDD, JCDS has, you know, how many houses do friends? Mental health, they work with Pathways to Hope. If they could list, you know, when they're giving their budget discussions, what do they currently have for housing? So, you know, as we get a picture, I mean, they're presenting, might as well include their housing snapshot, because each of these has a housing snapshot that are they ready working with. Mental health has so many housing vouchers, so, you know, so to speak.
Good point. That's good. Other questions? Ms. Hanslick.
I had one comment and one question. First of all, I would challenge my colleagues on the commission to attend the June 11 Human Service Summit, because I think a lot of the questions I'm hearing will get a lot of information from United Community Services about housing needs in the metro, or in Johnson County and the metro area. I think it'd be a great starting point, so I challenge all of you to join me there. Secondly, I have just a technical question. On the actual clean copy, the, under Board of County Commissioners priorities 2019 to 2020, I would recommend just removing, there's a statement there that I think is really not relevant and is a bit confusing. So, I would like to ask that that be removed.
And that statement is?
Well, the statement says, "Top three priority initiatives, work plan, and progress that can be made on the other topics identified within existing resources." I'm not really sure what that means. I think it was, I think we had changed a previous statement, and in the changing of it, we kind of lost the meaning.
Sure. So, to clarify, that portion has not changed. That's what came out of the retreat, and I kept it the same every time we've talked about it. I think the original intent and the consultant may have suggested it, and it seemed like there was an understanding. I think the goal of that is to show that our time and energy and focus, and it helps drive our recommended budget to you all, are the top three. The others will be at a measured pace, because if we have, if we're spread too thin and trying to, we won't be able to spend as much focus on that as the other three. So, that was the intent of it. It's up to, if you guys want to change it, as long as that's clear, I don't, it's up to you guys.
To me, the plan is clear without that statement, because the top priorities are the three that you mentioned. And then, it says, "Other topics identified, progress that can be made within existing resources." That's my recommendation, but certainly others may want to have a different.
Mr. Ashcraft.
I have no objections to the change. I was going to segue to another item, though, Mr. Chairman.
As long as, there's some clarity there that we're on the same page, I think it's fine.
Yes, you had another question?
Yes, sir. I was just going to mention that the fifth item, I still hope we will have a discussion regarding TIFs and tax abatements, particularly as it relates to, quote-unquote, "historic policies on job growth and livable wages."
I think that's certainly, depending upon what happens in the legislature, I think that might have an impact, too.
You think anything will happen in the legislature?
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
We shall find out.
Don't quote me on that, please.
But anyway, there is that bill, which Cindy is still somehow alive somewhere?
Yes, it's not passed the Senate yet, but it's passed the House.
Okay, all right.
Is it above the line now?
Yeah, it's been in conference committee, so the conference committee report has gotten through the House.
And for clarification, this would be a state requirement, that there be certain information provided and made public in regards to tax abatement projects. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Well, remain on action or consent?
Action, please.
Action, okay. So noted. Next item.
Item number four, consider authorizing a supplemental contract with George Butler Associates for the design of safety improvements for 199th Street from Gardner Road to Clare Road in the amount not to exceed $57,510.
Mr. Boz.
Good morning. Jeff Oswood, Public Works. This is our 199th Street Gardner to Clare project. We're really excited about the safety improvements we have planned for this section of road. In order to get the design of that accomplished, we do need to do a change, or, excuse me, supplemental agreement for this contract. I do want to explain briefly that we do tend to fee our design projects very tight for a simple standard project. That way, when special cases and opportunities come up, we can address those in a thoughtful and intentional manner, and how we want to proceed with those, and even if we want to proceed with those. So, it's not unusual for us to have supplemental agreements on our design contracts. This one just happened to exceed our department authority, and that's why we're here today for this.
All right. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Just a clarification. Mr. Boz, the original contract with George Butler, was that competitively bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Consent is fine.
Consent?
Yes.
All right. So noted. Next item.
Item number five, IFB number 2019-014, consider authorizing a contract with McAnamy Construction Incorporated for 18 miles of overlays at various locations in unincorporated Johnson County in the amount not to exceed $2,169,000.
Mr. Boz.
Jeff, excuse me, Jeff Oswood, Public Works. This is our annual overlay project. This is our most substantial maintenance that we do every year. It's vital that we continue to keep our paved roads in as good a condition as possible in the unincorporated part of the county. We did competitively bid this. We did get five bidders, which is actually pretty unusual for us to get five, so we're very excited to see that. I do want to point out that every year, we ask what asphalt prices are going to do before we bid, and we keep hearing, oh, they're going to go up substantially. And if you look at this graph, the last several years, they've stayed the same, right around $50 a ton. This year, everybody was like, hey, they're going to stay the same, and they went up 10% to 55. So, you never really know till you bid what you're going to get. If this trend continues, though, there could be some budget implications several years in the future on this. So, I just wanted to point that out. We're hopeful that they'll either plateau or go back down again next year, but we'll have to wait and see how that pans out. McAnamy Construction was the low bidder. They are below our engineer's estimate, so, and we follow purchasing procedures, so we are recommending going ahead and selecting McAnamy for this project.
Any questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, Mr. Boz, neat, clean, clear, very good job on the briefing sheet, and consenting is fine with me and Mr. Chairman.
Well, what does everybody, this is a significant amount of public investment, and there may be comments, who knows? So, I think I recommend we leave it on action.
For the public knowledge, it may not, keeping it in front of the public is not a bad deal.
Ms. Fast.
So, you know, a low bid is always not the best bid. Is our policy always to go with the low bid? Because at times, you know, I've seen, being on city council, some contractors do change order after change order, so in the end, they're really the highest bidder. And then, and so, I mean, low bid is not always the best bid.
Correct. We tend to go with the low bidder. We've had really, we haven't had those issues. Unlike most public agencies, we actually prepare the invoice and have the contractor approve it versus the other way around. So, we are able to control that a whole lot better than some other agencies are. It's a little more work on our end, but we think we get a better product out at the end on that. So, we're comfortable with the low bidder in most cases.
No, but generally, it is low and best bid. So, there is that ability to take another bid that is not the low bid.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, it's determined for various reasons to be the best bid, and our experience with McAnamy has been significant over the years, so.
I just got to comment, they're a shoddy-based business I'm very familiar with. 60-year, 60-year history. They're one of the largest asphalt paving contractors in Johnson County.
And your signs are out there.
No. I haven't had an opponent the last two times.
He does sell them insurance.
Yeah.
Chairman. Okay, yes, Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, I don't have a problem with the low bid. I'm just, excuse me, wondering if you could explain a little bit the difference between the engineer's estimate and the actual bid. I'm assuming there's nothing that's been left out, but I'm just curious why there is a difference.
Well, the engineer's estimate is based on our experience, well, we, first of all, we specify the product and the quantity on everything we're going to do, and that's in place. So, we have experience with that over the last several, or many years, and we use that experience to come up with the engineer's estimate. So, we're not really looking at the means and methods of the contract, or we're just looking at our history. So, we're making a prediction of what that is. And really, it's just to get a gauge, are we within budget? Do we need to cut back? And then, state statute requires that the low bid be within 5% of, or below, or only 5% above the engineer's estimate in order to let a construction project. So, that's what it's used for. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, I just want to make sure there's, we're not cutting any corners.
No. Everybody's bidding the exact same bid items at the exact same quantity, and that's for the construction completed in place.
Great, thank you.
I would simply make this comment, the engineer's estimate is exactly that, an estimate, and if it comes in lower, that's good news. If it comes in higher, that creates some angst, so.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to add, Ms. Hanslick, the value of engineering estimate is, it gives us validation in terms of the bidding process. I'm very supportive of that, and I think Mr. Boz and his staff do an exceptional job, and I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, that will remain on action. Next item.
Item number six, Resolution Number 018-19, consider adopting to remove vehicle weight limits by rescinding Resolution Number 071-92.
Mr. Boz.
Jeff Oswood, Public Works. This is a, the resolution we're looking at rescinding was established in 1992 on five roads, which was unincorporated Johnson County at the time. They were roads that were in really bad shape, that needed to have the weight restriction on it in order to preserve the character of the road and keep it safe for the traveling public. Since that time, three of those sections have been, are now in cities, so they're no longer under our jurisdiction. The two roads that still are are Lone Elm and 175th Street. As you can see on the map, the Lone Elm one, City of Alatha, has taken over maintenance and removed those signs. The ones on 175th, that road has been completely reconstructed. There really is no underlying engineering reason to keep the weight restriction on that, so we want to go ahead and just rescind this entire resolution and just kind of housekeeping, clean this up.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Boz, are there any other roads or resolutions of this nature, or was this the only one?
There are other ones. We have some specific ones on bridges, but this cleans up most of the road ones left in unincorporated.
Personally, I'd be open if you have such a review to change it so that you can handle this administratively, but unless there's some.
The weight limits signs are statutory.
Okay.
So, the state legislature requires us to come to the board for that, yes.
Okay, well, consent. I recommend we keep this on consent. Next item.
Item number seven, Resolution Number 015-19, application number SW-FDP-3454GA, consider request from DuPont, Danusco, USA for a final development plan located at 201 North or New Century Parkway, New Century Air Center.
Okay, Seth. Yes, go ahead.
Good morning. Paul Greeley with the Planning Department. This is a request from DuPont. They're located out at New Century Air Center. They're a food product manufacturing facility, have been out there since the 1970s. What this project involves is to construct a new process air cooling system at the plant, and what this project will do is reduce the amount of anhydrous ammonia that they use now for cooling at the plant. And on completion of the project, they will reduce the amount of anhydrous ammonia that they currently have there by close to 90%. So, that's a good thing. That means if there is a release, there's much less product there to release and to have an effect in the neighborhood. So, a good thing from that perspective. The zoning board held a meeting on this, and both the zoning board and staff recommend approval with stipulations. By the way, DuPont did hold a meeting with the neighbors prior to the zoning board meeting and did have some members of the public come, and I understand that was well-received by those neighbors, and actually, a couple came to the zoning board meeting and voiced support for this project, so I'm available for questions.
Well, DuPont's been a longtime business partner at this location, and congratulations on their upgrades to their system. This is a zoning item, so remain on action. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, is this the same item that Mr. Jensen made comment on a few weeks ago about how well the county had worked with, and a lot of accolades there? So, good for you, thank you. Unfortunately, I did not see that reflected in any of the media out there, but if they have an opportunity to note that sometimes we do get it right, and I appreciate your efforts.
Okay. Next item.
Item number eight, application number NW-PP-FP-3445LE, consider request from Phelps Engineering Incorporated applicant in Samuel P. and Vicky S. Machesny, landowners for preliminary and final plat for five residential lots to be known as Painted M Ranch on approximately 50 acres on property-zoned RUR rural district located at 12525 Homestead Lane.
Mr. Greeley.
Paul Greeley, Planning Department. This is a preliminary and final plat for five residential lots on approximately 50 acres, property-zoned RUR rural at 12525 Homestead Lane. The lots, these lots, five lots will take access and driveways directly to 127th Street, which is a type 1 carnip. The proposal complies with the zoning and subdivision regulations, and specifically, as you may recall, recent changes that allow this type of design in this manner to take direct access to lots, to streets. The zoning board and staff both recommend approval with stipulations that are included in the briefing sheet. I'm available for questions.
Okay, questions? All right, this is a zoning item. We'll remain on action. Next item.
Item number nine, Resolution Number 014-19, application numbers NW-PRUR- Application numbers NW-PRUR-3443, NW-PP-3444, and NW-CU-3447. Consider three applications from Phelps Engineering Incorporated, applicant and Samuel P. and Vicky S. McChesney, landowners, for, one, a rezoning from RUR rural district to PRUR planned rural district, two, a preliminary planned plat for four residential lots to be known as Painted M Ranch 2nd, and, three, a conditional use permit for horse stable and boarding operation in the PRUR planned rural district at 12547 Homestead Lane.
Ms. Greeley.
Paul Greeley, Planning Department. Again, three components to this, as mentioned, a rezoning, a preliminary final plat, and a conditional use permit proposed by the property owners. The zoning board and staff have both recommended denial of this, of these applications. The primary reason for the denial is that the proposed PRUR planned rural district zoning requires that all new lots front on a public street. However, in this case, the landowner is proposing that access be provided by an existing private driveway through an easement. And so that's the main issue why this all falls apart. I wanted to let you know earlier this week, the landowner requested that the B.O.C.C. continue this, continue your consideration of this item until May 16th meeting. That's certainly one option, and just to remind you of your other options on this, besides a continuance, is that you can uphold the zoning board's recommendation to deny. So that's an option of next week. If you don't want to do that, as you know, you can remand it back to the zoning board with reasons, and we can talk more about that here this morning or next week.
Well, Ms. Greeley, let me ask you this. As far as the timing of a continuance, is there, is there a possibility that something can be worked out? And if there is, should we go ahead and send it back to the zoning board so they can review it at appropriate time? And if it can be resolved, then the item moves through the process a little quicker?
I think there's benefit in talking about that, sending it back versus just delaying it. I know the applicant wants some more time, and I don't, I don't know that they may care one way or the other, but, so I think what you suggest to remand it back is probably a better option, but to give them more time instead of the standard 30 days, say, let's give them 90 days.
Well, why don't you have that conversation with the applicant, and we can address it next week?
Be happy to do that.
Again, this will remain on action. Next item.
Item number 10. Application number NW-PP-FP-3450-L. Consider a request from Phelps Engineering Incorporated, applicant and George Bryan Snaz, landowner, for preliminary and final plat approval for three lots on approximately 30 acres to be known as Snaz Replat in Section 6, Township 13 South, Range 22 East, in Johnson County, Kansas, located at 10115 Edgerton Road.
Ms. Greeley.
Paul Greeley, Planning Department. This is a preliminary and final plat for three lots on 30 acres. So this property's zoned rural, it allows for the 10-acre lots, and both 103rd and Edgerton Road, which this adjoins, are type 1s, and this complies with the recent changes that I talked about earlier to the zoning and subdivision regulations that allow these types of lots to take direct access to the county arterial roads. Zoning board and staff both recommend approval.
Questions? Ms. Fast?
Yeah, I mean, so is that green, the sunflower right there, the green below? Is that?
It's the sunflower.
On the overhead, the green rectangle is a little.
I need to drive by there, I've been there forever.
It's a small county park.
There's a parking lot, public can access it.
Any other questions? Ms. Hanslick?
I just had a question when I was looking at this earlier this week. I'm just trying to get a sense of what is on the east side of the boundaries of this lot. Is there some, is there an access road there? I couldn't really tell.
So just the east of this property you're asking?
Yes, the boundary on the east.
So on the screen is a picture of the area, okay? Edgerton Road course there on the left side, 103rd. So to the east is farm ground.
Okay, so that's not, that's not a road there or any kind of access?
No, well, down, down at the very corner there, there's some kind of an access, and I'm not sure what that is. It may be some kind of a utility structure, but generally, that ground to the east is undeveloped. It's farm ground, there's farm, farm access points to it, but there's not a street in there.
Okay.
Until you get to Clearview City, which is another almost half mile to the east.
Well, I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify that Edgerton Road and 103rd Street are the.
Those are the primary roads, correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, this will remain on action.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number 11. Resolution number WD-19-011. Consider approving to determine and apportion final project costs of sewer improvements totaling $24,678.24 within lateral sewer district number one of Little Mill Creek number seven, and setting a public hearing on May 8, 2019, 6:30 PM, at the Johnson County Administration Building, 111 South Cherry Street, Room 201, Olathe, Kansas, on the proposed assessments upon properties in this benefit district.
Ms. Pecari.
Good morning. Chairman and Commissioner Susan Pecari with Wastewater. The subject before you this morning is to establish the finalized cost for the lateral sewer district, and so what we're talking about here is a small purple line. We actually constructed that for the lateral sewer district, which you see outlined here by the bold, dark, and in yellow here. We constructed that as part of a sewer to serve a contracted district up here that's shown in green, at Shawnee Mission Parkway and Mauer Roads on the east side here. And the green line was the CMSD line, or the contract line, district line that was constructed. So we've completed that project. The costs have been finalized and certified, and so today, we're asking for the board to finalize those costs and set a public hearing for May 8, so that we can have, hold a public hearing to present those costs.
Okay. Again, just clarification, we're determining the final cost. The public hearing will be held at a subsequent date where all participants in the benefit district will be notified of those costs, and then it comes back to us for a final determination. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Is this in Commission District 2?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, this is in District 2, so.
Okay, well.
You may recall, this, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to remind you, this was the Bell, Bell Road project is probably a better-known name.
Right. Does this need to remain on action, Mr. Jarrett, or can it move to consent?
It can be consented.
All right, I would recommend consent. So noted. Next item.
Item number 12. Consider authorizing an exception to the county's purchasing procedures as permitted under procedure number 110.180, paragraphs A.4 and A.16, for the purchase of DNA kits, reagents, and supplies by the Sheriff's Office Crime Lab from Life Technologies and Promega in an annual amount not to exceed $250,000 for each vendor annually for a period of three years.
Sheriff's Office.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Brewer. I work with the Sheriff's Office and the crime laboratory. I'm in the DNA section. So in order to perform DNA testing for criminal cases, the Sheriff's Office uses commercially-available kits from two main vendors, it's Life Technologies and Promega, and on an annual basis, purchase from these vendors will exceed $100,000. The crime lab is actively working on reducing backlog DNA cases to include person crimes and property crimes, and over the past two years, items submitted to the lab have increased over 50%. Additionally, the amount of sexual assault kits received by the laboratory more than doubled in 2018, following the adoption of a statewide initiative recommending a submit-all, test-all approach. Recent improvements in the testing efficiency in the laboratory has allowed us to test more samples per year, and as the lab has implemented improved technologies, the cost for each of these samples has increased. The crime lab has selected the products that we use based on attributes and performance, and these products have undergone a rigorous validation process and training process, sometimes taking six to 12 months. Once this process is completed, it's not practical to change vendors or technologies based on the time commitment. The crime lab has requested an exception to competition not to exceed $250,000 on an annual basis for DNA testing products from both Life Technologies and Promega over a three-year term. Please note that the laboratory's current budget is structured to accommodate these purchases, and this request has no budgetary impact. We do not anticipate spending upwards of the $250,000 limit per vendor, however, this request allows for a buffer in the event of future costs and productivity increases. Any questions?
Do you anticipate that this will allow you to clear the backlog or a substantial portion thereof?
Well, this will allow us to at least work on clearing the backlog. I'm not going to say that we're going to reduce the backlog because of this, so.
Okay, and the item is before us because of the exception?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions, Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brewer, thank you. The program and efforts are very much appreciated. The question I have is, when we're down to just two vendors, how do we, and I'll use the royal we because I'm sure it's not just the Sheriff's Department in Johnson County that faces this, but how do we guard against, and I'm going to use the term price fixing by just two vendors? They can set whatever price they think they can get away with. How do we guard against that generally and specifically in our case? There just, are no other options available to consider?
Correct. So what there are nationwide and probably globally is three main vendors of these, of these kits, of these products, and we happen to use two of those vendors. And we selected our products by comparison of all comparable products, and I can tell you that the products from all three of these vendors are similarly priced, and so, yes, we are kind of.
Trapped.
If you want to put it that way, right. We are, we are, we do have to make our purchases based on their pricing.
Okay, okay. All right, any other questions? Ms. Hanslick?
I just had a question. Do the products that you're referring to, the reagents and supplies particularly, I guess I'm equating it to diabetic supplies, that if you buy a certain kind of machine, you have to buy the strips that work with that machine? Is it, is it something similar to that? Does the, do the supplies have to match the equipment that we have?
For one of the vendors, yes. We have their equipment, and we've been using them for over five years, maybe up to eight years, and so we do have to buy their, their products and supplies.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Consent, action?
Consent.
All right, consent. We have one more item, item number 13. Mr. Allen.
This is for the county appraisal recruitment process. I would move to approve and add an item to the action agenda for the April 18 meeting, which would approve moving forward with a recruitment process for the position of county appraiser.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to add the item in regards to the county appraisers' process to next week's agenda. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanslick, yes?
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye.
Motion approved. Are there any other items?
No, sir.
I think that should conclude our agenda review. We will, we are adjourned, and we will come back after a very short break for the committee of the whole meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.